Good morning. It is eight thirty-four on Wednesday, October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, and this is the meeting of the Sandpoint Arts Culture art preservation. And we are now called to order. For the record, I am Chairwoman Ellie Sossnas, presiding at the City Council Chambers and City Hall, one-two-three Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. Commission members present are Hannah Combs, Caitlin Shook, Barry Burgess, itself, and Rick Decker is on Zoom. Commission members who are absent are Torrin Viedemeyer, Kate McAllisters, uh, Mike Lisco, and Keely Gray. Heather Upton is our, uh, staff liaison, and I'll take it all.
Well, good morning. Thank you all for being here. Um, we're so excited to be able to review and do a selection for our new fall phase of the Silver Box Program. And I'm really excited to introduce Amber Williams. She is our new, um, contracts and procurement officer. I'm sure there's a little bit more to your title as well.
Fine.
But I'm actually gonna hand the meeting over to Amber, and she's gonna go over how we're gonna do the selection process and kind of facilitate the meeting for us this morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Amber.
You, you have the big sheet. That's your scoring sheet. And then there's a packet there, and in that packet, the first, um, thing you're looking at is the, um, sorry, RFP, and I've just highlighted on that, um, the things that you need to pay attention to when, um, you're scoring. And there were three submissions, um, and I just have them in alphabetical order behind that packet. Um, so ideally, what we do is we go through, we start with the first one, which would be, um, I love saying names. Yeah. Which would be Dave Gonzalez. And so his is the first one in your packet. Um, and then you just have to check and see if he meets criteria that was put in this RFP. So, um, the things, the things that you wanna make sure that you're paying atten- attention to really are the things with the checkboxes. So, um, is it an original work? Uh, and do they own the rights to it? Um, the art cannot have any kind of advertisements on it, no religious references, sexual content, or political delusion. Has to be pretty neutral. Um, has to be durable for the outdoors, because it's gonna be outdoors in Idaho, so, um, it can't have any water features or any kind of a kinetic, uh, elements to it because obvious reasons. It's just gonna take more maintenance to do something like that, especially in the winter times. Um, has to be structurally safe, obviously. Um, we don't want anybody getting injured. Um, it has to arrive in the same condition as portrayed in the photographs, and as, um, Heather said, we have a couple that are not not done. The artwork is not quite done, so we do have a drawing of one, not a photograph, but it's a pretty good drawing. Um, so the minimum size is two feet by two feet by two feet, and the maximum size is, uh, four feet by four feet by four feet. Um, it has to be able to be securely bolted onto that, uh, steel attachment plate. It can't weigh any more than three hundred pounds. Um, and the artist has accomplished all of those things. Um, is the first step. And then they have to, they have to meet these specific things that we requested. We requested a cover letter with their handwritten signature on it. Um, or signed. And so I guess either way, I just happen to know that all three of them are signed. Um, the proposal, they have to have a resume. They have to have examples of their past work, and they should be providing us with, um, with actual documentation. Um, it specifically says no social media links. And then, um, two or three pictures that identify, uh, the piece of art that they want to to have entered into this. Um, and again, that was a little, I think, difficult for the two that that didn't, aren't quite done yet. And the description of the art. So that's the description of the piece that they're submitting, um, including all of the things that we, that we, I touched on on the first page. Um, what is it made of? What are the dimensions? What is the weight? What is the title? The date of construction, including the maintenance, stated insurance value, and sale price. Um, if they're missing something in those specifications, then it says that they will be considered non-responsive and disqualified. Um, and then the back page is, um, more after we, after you choose which art piece you want. It's just the next steps for the artist. Um, as far as, you know, bringing the art in and the deadlines and things for that. Um, so the first two pages are really what we'll focus on when we're scoring.
Would you like me to close that door? Does that bother you?
Oh, no, it's fine. Well, it's up to you guys, but doesn't bother me. So on this giant score sheet that you have, um, the things that are on here are the specific things that we requested in our request. So the, um, the cover letter, the resume, the related past work, images or videos, the description of their art, and all of those things have a score. Um, if you look at the score sheet right below in that gray box, it shows you, um, there's a formula. This is an Excel, so there's a formula in there that makes everything, um, calculate appropriately for loss of points, depending on where you're gonna find them. So if they fail to meet the RFP, that would be a poor score, and so for fifteen points, that would be a three point is what you would score them. Meeting the expectations would be seven point five, exceeding the expectations would be eleven point three, and then far exceeding those expectations, they would receive full points. Um, the only one that doesn't have points is the cover letter, so that's a pass/fail, um, which is either it's there or it's not. That's really all the directions as far as scoring. Oh, and so as, when you do score, so you don't each give individual, um, you don't have an individual score sheet. All of the score sheets have to match. So you have to, um, you have to discuss it as a group and make a decision collaboratively on a score, so that everybody's in agreement on each score for each piece, and then that's how certain are chosen.
Perfect. So should I run through the three applicants?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so when we were looking at the, I know the, um, rubric refers directly to the submission requirements, but when we're considering the criteria for art, it's on the first page. Should our consideration for how well the art meets that criteria, would that be included in our score for the description of art?
Um, so, yes, I mean, it, it kind of always into there. Um, and again, you guys can have that discussion and, and kind of decide if that's the, or what you're looking at.
Great question. Thank you, Amber.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I have a little slideshow popped up there, and then, um, you all have more in-depth sheets, um, but we have Dave Gonzo, and just as a reminder, he was our past, um, silver box artist. Uh, he was fantastic to work with in the last cycle, and he did Spirit Tree. Um, so the piece that he proposed is actually this, um, monsura plant, and it's developed from eighteen-inch gauge steel. The copper leaves will have a flame painted on them. And then the base of the piece will be a steel half sphere, um, and then he's, he has an understanding of the bolt plate that it'll need to be mounted on, and then it will be coated and protected. So this was, this is an image of an inspiration of what he's looking to achieve.
So the actual piece would be more of the natural, like, metal copper color?
That's correct. Very similar to the spirit tree in terms of the different tones of natural metal with elimination. So this measures out thirty-six by thirty-six by twenty-four, so it does meet, um, the requirements for size, uh, maintenance, all of those things, um, he met the criteria for.
Could we, um, would it be appropriate for each of the artists, maybe on the, like, criteria for a page, to just put a check by the ones that they?
Absolutely.
E?
Yeah.
So we can run through that, would that make sense? Perfect. So I'm on that first page of the call, and this is the selection criteria. Sorry, Rick, we can always email you at the documents if you're needing extra. Uh, okay, so the first one, art must be original. And to the artist, and they own the rights to the art, and it's available for one year. That's
Oh, this one's six months.
Yeah, so that didn't get updated in the RFP.
Oh, it is supposed to be one year.
Okay, so this is only a six-month fall.
Oh, so it needs to be fixed in the other piece? In the other section. I'm just, I'm just making those for myself.
Perfect. And so yes, check, that art may not contain advertising, religious references, sexual content, or convey politicism. It's a pretty neutral plant. Okay? Um, the art must be durable in outdoor conditions, including snow, ice, and surfaces, and, and it must be able to withstand, you know, environmental de- degradation, and, um, this is a sealed metal structure. Um, Dave has also committed to making sure that if anything breaks or bends, he's responsible for fixing it. Okay, so the next one, um, it cannot have kinetic elements or water features. This is a stagnant piece of art. And the art must be structurally safe and when it's displayed to the public and not have any potential lasting issues.
It's pretty small, so it wouldn't be like taking way out of the edges of it.
The little shop of horrors where the plant. Okay, so we've already gone over this, but we have that minimum and maximum size, which was neat. And Dave has, uh, addressed the, um, plate that it needs to be bolted on and the template. We've also seen him demonstrate an understanding with his previous piece. This piece weighs under three hundred pounds. And then, um, he did accomplish all of the things that were tested. E? So this does qualify according to our selection criteria. Are you guys ready to move on to that one? Do we fill the score sheet out for him, or we move on, or do we do all?
I would do them one at a time so that you're not comparing.
Okay.
It makes it a little more difficult, I think, when you're carrying. That's what I've found.
Love it. So looking at that score sheet, Amber, did you wanna?
So when you're looking at this score sheet, um, it's, it's, so everything that each person submitted is in front of you. Um, so the cover letter for him, um, he did send an email, it was a very nice email. It was not a cover letter. Um, so that was not there. Um, he did, though, send in a resume, which is beautiful. Very well put together. Uh, um, so it's, that, that discussion becomes yours as far as the points there. If you feel like his resume is, um, is scored in that point selection down below.
I would say a fifteen for the resume, then.
Okay. Can you guys all agree?
Would you agree?
Yeah. Okay. Related past work. Um, so this is where it got a little bit tricky for uh, Dave. He did submit a ton of past work, which is beautiful work. Um, however, he did submit it via all social media links.
Hmm. But didn't he send that email, Amber, that had the the attachments on that?
He might have sent it to you. I did not have a copy of that.
Okay, um, let me just look really quickly at that. Um, and, you know, this, I just wanna make the comment, this was a really quick call, and, um, we, with RFPs, it's kind of a new system for artists in our community, so it, I think it can be a little bit confusing in terms of exactly what they're looking for, so let's see here. Excuse me, I'll just take a pause, just finding that.
So while you're finding that, so on the cover letter, uh, portion of it, Amber, are you saying he had no cover letter, so we have to put a fail there?
Mm-hmm.
So I think
Unless it's in the email that, um, she's looking for right now. I don't have that email, so um, his artist statement on the resume doesn't relate to this piece specifically. It's just general.
And then So, may I ask?
Yeah.
These values are established as and the person has to qualify for that entire number, or their evaluations, we know, gradations. In other words, at thirty points, which is the highest score ever, suppose it doesn't quite meet them. Is that a fail? Or is it just, you give it fifteen? Or you give it some assumption of what value it has?
So try and see. So like, if you did, if they, if the score was thirty and they, and they have that fifteen, that would mean that they met the expectations. Um, I would say that 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 would be when we get submissions, they can come in extremely overdone, um, which is not a bad thing, but they're amazing. They have all kinds of different information and, and things in there. Um, or we get them where they just have absolutely the basics. I would say that meets expectations. Um, somebody that went over with I feel like would have more points than that, and then when you add all those points together, it puts you a final score, and that's, we're just looking for the highest score. Um, if that is
Looking for the highest score.
Out of the, out of the, these three for this particular one, um, and then the highest score, then you guys can have a discussion about that, and, um, I'm not sure in this RFP.
Sorry.
Heather, do you know, um?
Yeah, Amber, and I apologize. Um, I think there's a little bit of a clerical moment that I'm touching, and we both have been burning the candle at the many projects, so
Oh, yeah.
We both were here very late, um, following up with this art call. Um, so I'm gonna pull up an email that I got, and this came in from the Sandpoint City Clerk's office, which has a number of images and
Oh.
and the cover letter and everything, so there might have been kind of like, we have a new
Is that for Dave?
Yeah, it's for Dave. We have like a new email, and I think it might have been part of that last in, uh, translation in terms of emails. So, oh, this was a submission that I received. It was forwarded to me from the Sandpoint City Clerk's office. And here I have the description of the artwork in a PDF, which talks about the monsura plant. And then I also have excuse me. Back to that. Um, he has a variety of other work studies done, um, so there's one, two, three, four. He has the artist resume, and then he also provided a PDF, a cover letter. So it looks like we've identified all of the missing pieces. And then somehow, I, I think with our new website and the system, so we're gonna just be brilliant after we get through this one.
I miss our first. My emails sometimes don't come to me when they should.
Yes, and, uh,
Okay, well, I'm glad that you found that.
Yeah, me too.
Dave, Dave, I, is very precise, and I would have been surprised if he hadn't said anything he needed to, so.
Yeah.
So I guess instead of a fail, a pass.
Yes.
Everyone in agreement?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you all for your patience as we're, um, going through this call here. Okay, so we have a very robust cover letter that we've identified. I'm gonna go back to this, um, email here. I can pull up each one of his past works if you guys wanna see them as well.
It'd be great.
Okay, perfect.
Did you have another question?
Yeah, um, just about the, uh, point scale. Um, under excellent, it says far exceeds expectations, clearly stands out above others. So is that something where we wouldn't give something that score until we have actually seen all of the applicants, and then we could maybe go back and say,
Yeah.
of all of them, that one really stood out. Let's upgrade that score to a excellent instead of a very good.
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm just gonna take you guys through some of his past works from Mummy here. Um, and we got these amazing technical things. Come on, screen. Only you are here in person, Rick. He's my tech person. Okay, so this is a past work that he's done, um, beautiful. I'm gonna go on to the next one. Past work of a ballerina commission that he's you know if I'm going too fast. And so have this inner blue leather piece. Okay. So that would be similar to the finishes we would see on the monsura, where he said he was gonna interpret the flame. That's correct. And also the spirit tree had that, um, finish on it. And I'm just gonna up. It looks like he also did a sketch of the plant as well. There it is. With that inspiration. So it looks, this, between this and then the actual photo that he provided, it calls out to me that it kind of has the flavor of the spirit tree, but different leaf structure. And then, as he had stated in his description, it will have instead of kind of that terracotta pot that you see in the image, it's going to have more of a spirit, spirit pickle face to it. Not spiritual, but spherical.
Yeah.
Feral.
Yeah.
And more weeds probably. Yeah. I'm really excited about it. So then it has like the flames coming on it up here. Any other, I, I'm gonna go back to that email to make sure that we did not, um, skip anything.
Does he have all of the? Oh. Because we already talked about all the dimensions.
Yes, we have the dimensions, and there is one more piece here. This is a, this is a great example of the flame technique that he does. Um, so this is a piece that he's done in the past as well. Let me just make sure that it is being shared to you. Um, my technology is running a little slow this morning. Here we go.
So it's a surface treatment on that.
And then there's a coating on top of that to make sure that it, um, can withstand, excuse me, the the elements. Go ahead and stop sharing here for a second and go back to that. So, um, according to the, um, the, the email that has everything, we were able to identify just from a review standpoint, he has his, uh, an official cover letter, a description of the artwork, he has a PDF of a resume, and then he also submitted four different past sculptures in a PDF form, not just through social media. The social media were linked to an email account, um, that he did. We have a picture of the plant concept, um, and then we also have an actual JPG sketch of the copper plant. Um, concept as well.
All right, so then going on with the scoring, uh, for related past work, uh, what's your feeling about, uh, points? That? Damn.
So when we're looking at past work and we're trying to say, I would say he met the expectations. What kind of criteria would make us bump up from met expectations to exceeds expectations, like number of examples, or?
I also would say quality of submittal, too.
Quality of
I would say quality of submittal. I would say, um, you know, yeah, going above and beyond, um, anything that just, as a, as a scoring group, anything that just really makes you feel like it was really good. Um, and it's hard when you it's hard when you have great work because you haven't been able to see an example yet, um, and may not today of of something that's just like basic. So it's kind of hard to know that difference, but if you feel like, as a group, if you feel like somebody is meeting those criteria and they should, you, you feel like you wanna give them full points because they've done a beautiful job, that's completely fine. That's up to you guys.
Good point with, uh, we've had submissions before that we did see some lesser quality work, and so you're right, we may not see that today, but that definitely will come up in the future, I'm sure. Right? What do you think about related past work? It exceeds expectations.
And he's also participated in the call before, and we have a successful work history with him, too.
All right, so would we score him the full thirty points?
I will.
Okay. How about the images? I would say
I would say meets expectations simply because he hasn't finished the piece, and so we're kind of basing this on a pencil sketch, even though he has provided great images of how he would do it, um, but we don't have a photo of the
Okay, so how many points would you give him?
It'd be a fifteen.
Fifteen? Barry, are you in agreement?
Yeah, I give him half, fifty, so.
Does Rick have the information?
Rick? You're in agreement with that? Perfect.
Noted affirmatively. All right, how about the description of the art?
Sorry, I'm gonna jump in really quick. Um, so the images piece would be, if you're doing met expectations, it would be a twelve point five. Sorry.
Oh. Oh, it's out of twenty-five, okay.
Yeah, it's out of, it's not out of fifty.
Did we get a title?
Yes, Living in Color. Very fun.
And he's provided cleaning and maintenance instructions.
He did.
The value.
Yes.
Do we want to award all thirty points then?
This sounds very.
Okay, great. All right, and we want to hold off on telling them, I suppose, until we're all through?
Uh, you can, yeah.
Great. Excuse me, there we go. So the next is Anna Lee Harris. She goes by Lee Harris. And she's an artist from Bonner's Ferry who participated and was awarded in our last call. And her sculpture was a reminder was by Water's Edge. And this also has kind of a similar makeup where she's using mixed metals that are powder coated and to make sure that piece is stable. And there's this piece called Proud Phillies. And it's comprised of marble and basalt, um, for materials along with that powder coated metal. It measures out at four feet in height by twenty inches by twenty inches. And she does have it secured to a base. And with the sixteen by sixteen measurements, she provided cleaning instructions. And then Amber, I'll have you go over her submittals.
Okay.
Which are also in your packet.
So yeah, so, um, everything is in this packet. She sent in, um, all of this stuff. So she does have a cover letter. Yeah, that one's pretty easy. The next page is her resume. It's, it's very thorough. And you can decide as far as you're scoring on that.
You want the score as we go through?
That may be.
Oh, sorry.
Not as well laid out as. And I do have to comment, she was taking screenshots with her phone of documents and uploading them. Um, so the files came through, it's like a JPEG, which was a little bit more difficult for staff to manage than an actual PDF.
I would say it met expectation. So are we judging it just based on the fact that it includes your resume or like the content and breadth?
So that, um, it's not a pass fail.
Okay.
So I would. My interpretation would be to, to give it points based on, on its ability to be read and layout and organization.
I think the content is impressive. She has a lot of experience that goes back. I'm, the resume gives me confidence.
Say, if it was based on the content, I would, it exceeds expectations based on the, like, how it was submitted. I would say that.
Is there any in-between or?
So, so your options are, and the points for a fifteen point score, you're looking at, um, fail, which she didn't, that doesn't apply. Met, met expectations exceeded or far exceeded.
Okay, so then I would say met. And that would be.
That would be a seven point five.
Everybody in agreement on that?
And then, um, you continued through her thing. So the next page is going to be, um, this was another screenshot that she sent in and it describes a lot of her work. Um, not all of this work is in the pictures behind, but, um, some of it is. When I was looking at this last night after I had already put them all together, um, I should have put the names of the work behind and I didn't do that, but I will, I could tell you what they are, um, fairly well from memory. The first picture that you're going to look at is going to be, um, I believe this river's bounty. Uh, and you can see the, yes, sorry, yes, this picture here. And you can see it's the metal art with the fish. Um, the next one, which is this one. Um, I believe that is. All right, let's mean a river's bank. No, that's not a river's bank. Homeward bound. It's got the eagles at the top. The next one is River's Bank and that is the one. That's the one that was up last year. Um, the one following that is the Ospreets. And then the, this next one is the final one of her past works and that's Flames of Knowledge. And then the page right after that is another, this is another screenshot. And it describes the art that she is submitting for this. So it is called Proud Phillies. It's powder coated iron granite. It's approximately a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty pounds, forty-eight inches tall by, or. Forty-eight inches. All right, am I reading that right? It looks bigger than that, sorry. Um, forty-eight inches tall by twenty inches by twenty inches. It is completed. She completed it in beginning of October. She's got cleaning instructions as far as closing it off or wiping it down. Uh, and then she does have the pricing there. But the cost that it costs her to powder coat it and then the insurance price with her sales price at the insurance price.
And just so everybody can see, it's a little brighter green, it looks like than the photo on the screen right now.
So there's three photos. So this photo's in here. I think that's a back photo.
I'll talk about the other ones.
That, that's, um, it looks to me, I'm assuming she did different angles of it. Oh, I didn't stop for the past work. Apologies. Now I'm just moving too fast.
So I just pulled up some of the other images and you can really see the vibrancy of that green powder coating. There, and then there's a lot of vibrancy on the eagles themselves, the yellow talons and then the white, and it looks to be a black. Then there's the, from the backside. Sort of images of that piece.
All right, well, let's pop back to related past work and talk about that score. She provided plenty of images of the past, I would say. What do you think about scoring? I don't think it's as quality as Dave's, but she, that expectation would sub anyone.
We have worked with her in the past and, um, she has always been able to, um, finish her. I think they show a good variety of her ability to work with different materials and meet different requirements for different pieces that she's, you know, very responsive to the, remember the call.
All right, should we go ahead and award thirty points?
Sure.
Barry, what do you think?
Yeah.
Rick, any comments?
Um, my, my only thought is the, uh, how sturdy the top is. I know it's similar to what was out there before, but, um, I do like that it's taller, so kids can't grab that.
Thank you.
But I'd just be a little nervous about getting that.
All right, on to the images, uh, provide two to three clearly identified images. Those are piece, so she did that. And the description of the art.
So. I was not able to. Amber, I don't know if you saw, but get a really refined description from her for the piece. We have the title. But all I have is, is this.
Yeah, joy, acceptance, familiarity of their herd.
Yeah.
It's the horses at the bottom.
Oh, there's. I didn't see the horse either.
Are they made of like different colors and marble?
Oh, okay, I see. Oh, and this is where it kind of goes back to, um, when we have a robust description, photos, it's PDF, it's all in one document, easy to follow. We're, we're, we don't miss as many things.
Yes.
You know, so.
Never thought that.
Yeah.
I was like Philly, that has to be, like, this is the name. I don't even know what a Philly is.
But they also, good thing that she wrote that in the description.
Yeah.
That's brilliant. Yeah.
But she didn't say there was spooking at the bottom. We had to really interpret that. I would, I wouldn't say exceeds expectations, but are exceeds, but. I can't get.
Yeah. Let's do that. So. We're gonna be so amazing at this every time we do. So you're talking about with the selection criteria. Okay, so Hannah just requested to go back through that list and I'm gonna go pretty quickly. Let me know. You need me to slow down. So this is back to the criteria. So she met the original, this is original artwork by her. She owns the art, um, that six month agreement. And she's agreed to that. It does not contain any advertising, religious reference, sexual content, or convey any political partisan. Um, the art must be durable, network conditions, including snow and ice and anything else we encounter. The art shall not have kinetic elements or water features. It is a stagnant piece. And it's structurally safe for display in the public, um, and it will be securely fastened. She's committed to that. Rick, um, you made the comment about the heist in the wire, but it seems she does have quite a few public art pieces that are similar to that and they, they have survived. She's committed to also making sure that if anything happens, she'll repair it. Okay, so, um, it will arrive in the same condition as it's been portrayed for trade in the photograph. This is the actual piece in the photograph. And we have the minimum size of twenty-four by twenty-four by twenty-four and a maximum of forty-eight by forty-eight by forty-eight.
A little small in two of those dimensions.
Yes. Hannah, so we are looking at twenty-one, twenty, right?
But would it still be able to mount?
Yes. So that's something to think about and we, we do have flaws in here that during kind of the selection period, we can make adjustments to a few things for patients. So thank you for pointing that out. Um, footprint securely bolted sixteen by sixteen and by quarter. So, and she has shown us that she can allow that to previous work with her. It, the piece does not weigh more than three hundred pounds. And, um, so she has accomplished all of the required components outlined in the RFP. That one criteria that, that's right.
So what do we think about the description of art points?
But are we, we're grading just this then or?
But you said to incorporate how well it meets these criteria in this.
Yeah, so, um, these things are kind of summarized or in the, the big paper in the block there, these, these things are kind of summarized in there and then on here, um, again, it has the description is actually like this stuff. So it should all kind of mesh together. But again, you can make, um, as a team, you can, whatever decision you, you make is, it's right, so. However, you want to score it.
Well, to get met expectations. Did it exceed expectation?
To me, I don't think it's correct. Acceptance, familiarity, joy, just described that artist. But I guess it's you, you, you picked up your span.
You know about Philly.
So I guess the, the question is, does it meet expectation or exceed expectation? If you want to do met expectations, then it would be fifteen? Yeah, is that correct?
Sorry.
Be my vote.
Yes. That expectations would be fifteen, yes.
What do you think?
Did we have, um, like, in our call, did it clearly? I'm just wondering how, how we described what she was supposed to do in this description. Did we, did we ask her just this or did we ask for?
And yes, sending a picture.
Right, because I think we're getting the information we need from the photos, not as much from this, but did we ask for, like, deeper description of it or did?
From top to bottom, one piece looks like.
Yeah, yeah. So in our call, um, and which, and also the, what's so neat about this is everything's new. This is a new call for us. The scoring, the, this kind of scoring template is brand new. Amber's incredible. She's new. Um, we have a new website that the submittals went through. That's new. So every single thing that was touched was new. And so I think you're bringing up a really good point. We can have a great meeting after and we can kind of talk about like maybe some refinement points. So pretty much, right, exactly. And the call was super short, right? Um, you know, generally we want to do a longer call, um, but we really wanted to see our, so it's kind of an interesting like circumstance moment. One thing to, um, consider is that the call was at a pretty high level, right? So people that do a lot of public art calls, you know, and, um, this is kind of a full-time thing. You're probably gonna see a little bit of a difference in terms of their submittals. Um, there's also that strategy of having like sub-context of like, when we say this, this is what we're looking for. So we can be as descriptive as we want in a call and then if, if we are more supportive about the exact. if, if we are more supportive about the exact information, then we'll probably be able to get more of what we want. But on the other hand, yeah, I mean, when you have artists that all fight, it also kind of through that selection period, do you want to work with an artist that needs a lot of extra support in what is being looked for? Or do you want to work with an artist that does this all the time and knows, you know, how to perform, you know, through a call without needing a lot of extra guidance? So those are all kind of things to.
I think I would and it's tough because I'm trying to figure out how much we can be comparing them. So we gave Dave full points. I would say she definitely missed the mark on not being quite at her minimum size. And that's something that she should have been aware of. So I would not give her full points, but I think that between the description and the images and what we asked from her, like we have a pretty good understanding of what the piece is and whether it could be a good fit. So I would lean toward the that the twenty two point five points for exceeds expectations, but I'm yeah.
I'm really quite confused. I'm confused because it seems to be values of one half. And this is the question I was asking earlier. What are these values? What are we really looking? I'm not quite sure. I do. It's difficult for me to make pure judgment only on some kind of numbers. It has to come from, you know, your, your choice has to come from other valuations besides just the numbers. So I mean, I'm happy to use seven and a half points instead of fifteen. But then is there an eighteen point three?
It almost feels like there should be like kind of another section, you know, with like artistic merit. Right, artistic merit, you know.
Do you like it?
Right, yeah, we're okay. Well, they met all this, but because the thing about art is it's really subjective and as very stating, it's like, does it fit into some sort of number system? So, but according to government procurement standards, and this is how we, we need to score public art. So I think we're gonna find that fabulous sweet spot, right? And this is, this is just an amazing experience getting to go through this and discover, you know. So I think we're gonna get through this according to our new templates, but I definitely think there is room for refinement. And then we also need to understand our, our, our community. We are here to support artists and broaden. And so if we need to have more supportive information and guidance in our template, then we should to make sure that, that our art calls feel very inclusive, right?
Yeah. And so maybe that's another criteria we could score on is how well does the inclusion of this piece for our overall goal of using this as a platform to encourage in.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, because we have different types of programming, right? Some are going to be more accessible and easier to participate in. And then we might have a very big public art call where we need an artist to, you know, can perform at, at a level that, you know, takes a very full time skill.
Roundabout.
Exactly. So I think that that's also things to consider too. So I'm really liking what we're finding out from going through this call of, of where we want to go for the future.
All right, back to the score though. What do you think? Twenty two and a half?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, excellent.
Okay, this, this is exciting. I always get excited when I be, it's always exciting to see artists that are submitted and participate in our calls, but then also to see a new individuals for that. And with the new medium. So, sorry, I'm my remind my computer to share again. Stop sharing and this building. Promise it's not my my technology skills here. Okay. Try this again. I'm gonna take you to our last artist here.
Oh, and what a great cover letter.
Yes, so let me go ahead and pull our friend up here. We have Denny Hansen. And he's a woodcarver. Sure. I know. Who needs visual? Okay. So and I apologize about the sculpture name. That is a clerical error of my end. This is not a proud Philly. Okay, so this is carved out of Western red cedar and it's three feet by four feet and eighteen inches. And the sculpture will be finished. And it will be done upon completion, but it will be used with a transparent stain in a variety of acrylic paints as well. He'll be using a torch. I, I'm going to show you kind of an example of some of his other works. It will be weatherproofed because he'll use a sealant on it. And it also will be protected from the UV rays.
And the name is called Quiet Descent.
Thank you. So he did submit, I was, I have to say, I was impressed with his seminal. It was one PDF document that had everything in it. And he provided everything in there.
He did. It's all in front of you. He has a cover letter and it it's done very nicely. Sign. The next one is going to be his resume. So I'll let you guys begin. Site on your score there.
I think that his resume includes so much competition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have to lay out.
I think it's complete. I would say it's a painting.
Yeah.
All right.
Then pass. Oh, I did that. That's put together in the wrong order. I apologize. You're gonna flip one more pass and that's going to be his past. It was in the document. So you look at the pictures of his carvings.
So far, it's expectations for me. I'm gonna pull this up here. It will work with me. Okay, so this is his actual packet. So it starts off with the cover letter that is signed. And
Oh, there you go.
And then we have a beautiful resume. There's an amazing description of the art piece with the title. My apologies. I was here with the cleaning staff last night writing on this. He has the insurance appraisal on there. He talks about like what can happen with wood and if a crack does occur, what he'll do to remedy it. I think, yeah, he definitely went above and beyond, but I just have to comment. The acrylic and then the torchwork is like this, the soft bits.
Amazing.
Yeah. Really exciting. I like that. He's done work all.
Yeah. All right, so related past work. Did I hear thirty? Rick, yes, thirty? All right, images. I'd say that's
He apologized for his sketches.
I would say since this one, it's not a completed work that he's submitting, we shouldn't give them full points, but I do think between the example of the cougar that he included in his past work and the sketches, he did a really good job. It's under.
Since we didn't give Dave full question. Twelve. Twelve point five? Yes. And the description of the arts.
So that's the page you skipped. Sorry, I
Yeah, it says up on the screen, the title, what it consists of. He actually talks about like the motion. It's traversing down a pile of rocks. Most likely stalking a prey. And he talked about the material, the approximate dimensions, the weight, it's going to be a hundred into a hundred and fifty pounds. And his timeframe of carving it. And isn't that incredible? Yeah, I love how he's walking.
And we do allow in width, right? It's in every, or yeah, forty. Forty eight inches in every dimension, right? So this isn't going to be too wide.
That's correct. Forty eight by forty eight by forty eight. And then also the stability of the piece in terms of whether the, the maintenance, the outlines. No, no, you're fine.
So you talk about how it would be mounted.
And he doesn't, but in order to qualify for this, like he understands it has to be mounted on that template that I provide to all the artists.
And back to the size. So the size does make a difference when we're deciding which.
Which will do that at the end. That's full points.
Yeah, yeah. I think very.
What was this last one? This? The image notes? Images and videos?
That's.
Oh, they did a twelve point five.
Twelve point five.
All right, so we're gonna put thirty on the description of the art. All right, very good. Okay. So we fill out our completed our mission.
So I can tell you what came at the scores that I've entered. We have two at eighty seven point five and one at eighty five even. I don't know how many pieces of art you guys are looking for. I believe this called for three. We would have three. So you guys have to just kind of make a decision about how many you want with only the three or if you want all three of them. The two, Dave and Denny are the two that scored at eighty seven and a half. And Lee is scoring at eighty five.
All right, well, good score, I think.
Yeah, especially again in the timeline that they had, they had only two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, when the media came out, really kind of landed about, about a week for them to be able to turn themselves around. And, and what I also wanted to just celebrate is I just, I see a really big commitment and, and also success moment. Two of the artists that did the previous fall participated again. And they both said when we were doing maybe install, how much they really enjoyed the call, the program, the process. And, and they were, they, they, it wasn't going to be easy, but they were like, we're going to do our best to try to participate in this next call. So I thought that that was really powerful.
That makes me really happy.
Yeah, I do have to comment too. There was an email from Dave and he had reached out to Denny and recommended that he participate as well, which was really neat. So the artist community is kind of working together and helping support our initiatives too. And just know we have, I'm just gonna pull up those locations. And let me just get to this. Perfect. So.
At this point, I feel like the scores are high enough. They all seem to, I mean, they scored well. I think we might discuss it, but I think we liked all three pieces.
I think as long as they, we can match them up with the right balance that they will fit on.
I have a look. An actual motion. How many you're accepting in? Yeah, that's a great idea. So at this point, do we want to make a motion or make a final motion after location is determined? I think I'll be a location.
I think we have to discuss that first.
Okay, fantastic.
Because then what if something doesn't fit?
I think council also really appreciates having that. Okay, so we have the three locations just running through. We have the one on Fifth and Oak, which is right by Columbia Bank Building here on the corner. And that's our tallest area and it's also, so when you're driving, Fifth is a main vertical for traffic. So you probably don't have as much pedestrian activity as some of the other areas. And but what I also appreciate with this placement, you're not going to have as many people kind of the circumference is a, it's a nice safe circumference. So probably more from vehicle pedestrian to the ownership. And we also have this location over by Farman's Park and by all the food trucks on Oak and fourth, excuse me. Oh, I'm so sorry. And so that's really where you're going to get probably a lot more people and pedestrians dangling and standing. And then the last one is over by the post office. So a lot of business activity, carpeting and so forth. That's the lowest. That's the lowest. Yeah. Pretty high since there in the past. Yes.
So I already have an idea of where I think each should go. All right.
I think the tall one, Lee Harris should go where her one is now on the I think the cougar should go in front of park and upstairs should go the.
I would agree the cougar should go in front of park because it has the heaviest, like biggest space. I would argue that the Harrison should go at the post office because it's the tallest. Since that's the shorter.
What's your opinion, Barry?
Sounds right.
And you're that. Rick, what, what's your opinion on the locations?
Yeah, I like the cougar by the park. And I'm open on the, the other two. I like the short for the taller piece, but then I also like the taller piece for the taller piece or the taller box for the taller artwork. So I'm open on those two.
Okay, my feeling is same as what Hannah said, and my reasoning is again, the tall bright piece on the short box in front of the post office, which needs some brightness. I feel like, I always like to put the bright ones over there because it needs a little. I love the post office. Just needs a, needs a bump, especially with the plywood. And then I think Dave's will look beautiful on the Oak and Fifth. And the brick building and on the top. You got it.
Yeah. So I think we're ready for a motion.
All right. So as a motion to amend these three pieces that we've reviewed spaces we've determined. Continue that. Want to recommend these three pieces in the spots we determined to send a castle for approval.
And why don't we go through the art, artists? Yeah, I can contribute to supporting you on that. So we have proud Philly by artist Anna Lee Harris to be mounted at the location near the post office. We have artist. We have artist. Dave Gonzo with the piece. Living in color. And to be installed at the placement near the Columbia Bank Building. And then third artist, Denny Harris.
Danny Hansen.
Hansen, excuse.
Quiet descent.
Quiet descent located. The box here.
Motion. Anna made that motion. Caitlin seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you all. This has been such a wonderful learning experience and I'm so excited about what we accomplished. And such a great, great moment of celebration for these artists. So thank you all for being here.
Amber, thank you so much for all your hard work.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you for your patience.
Amber, thank you for all your hard work on this. All right, and thank everybody on the commission. Appreciate you coming for the special meeting. All right, we're adjourned.
You were. Thank you guys so much. What?